Session is hereby resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the secretaria general be directed to read the titles and bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and community reports. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Please proceed.
Additional reference of business. House Bill 5613, declaring the Kalawit Lake in Kalawit, San Guangadelos Norte a tourist destination by Representative Amatongen.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 5619, declaring the city of Baguio as a mining pre-zone by Representative Gomar.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 5620, prioritizing mobility of people over the mobility of vehicles by Representative Ramualdes Yeda and Ramualdes Ferdinand.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill numbers 5621 and 5653, providing for a magnetic cart of commuters by Representative Ramualdes Yeda, Ramualdes Ferdinand, and Nogralles Juan.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5622, defining criminalizing and punishing terrorism by Representative Chungalau.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5623, banning the use of single-use plastics nationwide to eliminate plastic pollution in the Philippines by Representatives Yap, Eric, and Duterte.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 5624, granting Philippine citizenship to Jaime Rocamora Gomez by Representative Hernandez.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5625, establishing a national high school in Cababaca, Catarman Northern Samar to be known as CAG Abaca National High School by Representative Daza.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5626, converting the Sisigon Elementary School in Sisigon Matnok, Sorsogon into Sisigon Integrated School by Representative Ramos.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5627, mandating the administration of regular drug tests in correctional penal institutions by Representative Kapo Chan.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill 5628, prohibiting the dissemination of false information on bump drenchs or any other life-threatening or destructive materials by Representative Kapo Chan.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 5629, appropriating the sum of 6 billion pesos as supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2019 by Representative Belmonte.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 5630, preventing and reducing the use of electronic cigarettes or vaping by Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry and Committee on Health.
House Bill 5631, prohibiting the use of BPA in baby food packaging and containers, providing for its replacement with a less toxic alternative by Representative Bolilla.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5632, providing social pensions to all senior citizens by Representative Duterte, Ungap, and Garcia Vincent.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 5633, upgrading the minimum salary of government nurses from salary grade 11 to 15 by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 5634, enhancing the protection and development of the Sierra Madre region, creating the Sierra Madre Development Authority by Representative Nogralles Juan.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 5635, establishing a Philippine high school campus in Iggy Cagayan by Representative Lara.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill number 5636 and 5677, changing certain names of integrated national schools in the provinces of Sorsogon and Palawan by Representatives Scudero and Abueg Saldivar.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5637, amending Republic Act Number 8256, otherwise known as the declaring the foundation days and fiscals of the province of Dabo Oriental and the municipalities therein as special non-working public holidays to include all the cities and barangays therein by Representative Almario.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5638, mandating the participation of public and private establishment in the conduct of quarterly nationwide simultaneous earthquake drill by Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Disaster Management.
House Bill 5639 and 5676, converting various provincial roads into national road in the province of Palawan by Representative Abueg Saldivar.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5640, promoting the use of urban agriculture in all urban areas in the Philippines, establishing for the purpose the Urban Agriculture Program by Representative Mariano Hernandez.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 5641, amending Republic Act Number 10068 or the Organic Agriculture Act of 2010 by Representative Mariano Hernandez.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 5642, establishing the regulatory framework for the safe operations of the LPG industry by Representative T.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 5645, renaming the Adjong Memorial Polytechnic State College in the municipality of Dinsaan-Ramaingin, province of Lano del Sur, as the Adjong Memorial State College and extending the term of office of the president by Representative Adjong.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5646, mandating the institutionalization of emergency and disaster response training in public and private educational institutions by Representative De Los Santos.
To the Committee on Disaster Management.
House Bill number 5647, reapportioning the province of San Guangadel Sur into three legislative districts, Representative Babasa.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill number 5648, renewing the franchise granted to Trans Radio Broadcasting Corporation, Representative Palma.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill number 5649, strengthening the COMLEC by enhancing its fiscal autonomy, reorganizing its offices, upgrading employee skills, and augmenting their compensation allowances and benefits, Representative Hofer.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill number 5650 and 5678, creating additional RTC, MTC branches in Davao City and Benguet Province, Representatives Nogralles Jericho and Fong Wan.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill number 5651, strengthening RA Number 9208 as amended by RA Number 10364, entitled "An Act to Institute Policies to Eliminate Trafficking in Persons, Especially Women and Children", establishing the necessary institutional mechanisms for the protection and support of trafficked persons, providing penalty for its violation and other purposes, Representative Herrera D.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill number 5652, providing for a national framework for interns' rights, benefits, and welfare, Representative Nogralles Juan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill number 5654, establishing the Office of the Philippine Marshal Service under the Supreme Court of the Philippines, Representative Garcia Pablo John.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill number 5655, providing for the mandatory field health coverage for all barangay officials, employees, members of the Lupon, Tagapamayapa, Tanots, health workers, and barangay nutrition scholars, Representative Kapo Chan.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill number 5656, requiring the MMDA to implement text email notification system to promptly inform violators of the no-contact traffic apprehension policy, Representative C. Alvarado.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill number 5669, appropriating the sum of 8 billion 400 million pesos as supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2019.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill number 5670, protecting children by prohibiting and declaring child marriage as illegal, Representative Laxo Noel.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill number 5671, strengthening further the autonomy of local government units, Representative Garcia Jose Enrique.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill number 5672, amending RA Number 10175, otherwise known as the Cybercrime Prevention Act of 2012, Representative Casso Franz Zarate, Gaite, Kulyamat, and Ilago.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill number 5674, fixing the validity period of the license-to-own and possess permit to carry outside the residence or place of business and registration of firearms, Representative Sebilyano.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill number 5675, instituting budget reform that will ensure the equitable distribution of funds for all municipal and barangay LGUs for the purpose of implementation of the Ecological Solid Waste Management Act of 2000, Representative Tevez Jose.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill number 5678, providing for the reapportionment of the province of Benguet into two legislative districts, Representative Fong Wan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill number 5680, converting the Land Transportation Office, Region 6 of Bacolod City into Regular Licensing Center to be known as the Negroes Occidental Licensing Center, Representative Gassetaya.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill number 5681, mandating banking institutions to strengthen the financial system of agricultural fisheries and rural development in the Philippines, Representative Kuah.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Communications, letter dated November 11, 2019, of Ricote OICDED, Public Private Partnership Center submitting to the House a copy of the signed concession agreement between the DOTR and San Miguel Holdings Corporation for the new MIA project.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated 27 August 2019, of Attorney Maria Robia Adomos, OICSP Secretariat of the 29th Sangunem Panlalawigan, Province of Brazil, transmitting SP Resolutions Number 332, 323, both series of 2019.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Letter dated, a letter of Angelica Santa Cruz, Clerk of Court, Number 5, Branch RTC 289, Malabon City, forwarding a copy of the decision rendered by the said court in criminal case number 17632MAL, entitled "Philippines versus Marvin Relyon".
To the Committee on Justice.
Supina Judicatum, Pursuant to Section 151, Rule 13, uh, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, transmitting the subpoena judicatum ad testificandum dated 30 August 2019 issued by Attorney Romel Sumedeca, Clerk of Court, 5, RTC Branch 101, Quezon City, on criminal case number RQZN1901252CR, commanding Major General Romeo Prestosa or its duly authorized representatives, Sergeant-at-Arms, House of Representatives, to appear before the court on December 3, Tuesday, at 8:13 in the morning to produce the court's CCTV footage on June 26, 2018, between 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., particularly along IBP Road. Committee reports, Report Number 99 of the Committee on Foreign Affairs on House Concurd Resolution Number 5.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 100 and 113 of the Committees on Health and Appropriation on House Bill Numbers 831 and 5673.
To the Committee on Rules.
Reports Number 101 to 112 on the Committees on Justice and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 5657 and 5668.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the Journal Number 30 and 31 dated November 25 and 26 respectively. So move.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, allow us to greet the guests of the Honorable Majority Leader Ferdinand Martin Ramualdes and Tinog Sinirangan Party List Representative Yeda Marieke Ramualdes. These are guests from the Sangyo Foundation in Tacloban City, Jake Superalde, Felix Barion, Tita Coruña, Agina Ruiz, Eddie Gaspai, Cora Nicolasora, Rebecca Ada, Ricky Montejo, Rose Orejo, and Elizabeth Lesigues.
To our distinguished guests from Leite, the guests of our Majority Floor Leader and Representative from Tinog, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Monday, December 2, I move that we open Privilege Hour.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Privilege Hour is hereby open. Yes, Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, move to suspend.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, first to avail of the Privilege Hours, the honorable gentleman from Bayan Muna Partilist, Representative Carlos Zarate. I move that he be recognized. So move.
The distinguished gentleman from Bayan Muna Partilist, Representative Zarate, is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, ginawang speaker. Ginawang speaker, meron na akong ikakwento. Pagkahid ni Maud Smaga sa kanyang anak, papasok sa eskwelahan noong ikadalampot dalawa ng febrero noong nakaraang taon, ay dumiretsyo sa isang basketball court malapit sa kanilang bahay sa San Mateo, Rizal. Habang naglalaro ng basketball si Maud, ay dinukot siya ng mga nagpapakilala mga pulis na nakadamit si Billyan. Dahil inkomunikado si Maud at hindi alam ng kanyang pamilya at ng kanyang mga kaupisina, ang nangyari sa kanya, hinagilap siya sa mga pulis stations at campo buong araw at maghapon. Kinagabihan, natagpuan ng nila ang nakaitit na si Maud sa PNP CIDG compound sa Camp Krame. Bitbit ng pulis na dumukot kay Maud ang isang warantobares sa gawang-gawang kasong pagpatay na nangyari raw sa Kabadbaran, Agusan del Norte, at kinasuhan din siya ng illegal possession of firearms sa isang baril na nakuha umano sa kanyang bay. Ginawang speaker, si Maud ay isang organisador ng maunyon ng mga manggagawa at stop ng tanyag na organisasyon na mga kilusang pagawa ang kilusang mayo uno. Kilala si Maud bilang organisador at aktibista ng napakaraming mga manggagawa sa Port area at sa hilera ng mga pabrika mula Valenzuela papasok sa Centraluzon. Si Maud ay isang bilanggong politikal. Ang sumunod namang na kwento ay ang kwento ni Juan Alexander Reyes, umaskila lang si Bob. Siya ay tatay sa tatlong anak, mapagmahal na asawa, at isang mabuting anak. Sabi ng nanay ni Bob, siya ay matalino. Katunayan, siya ay honor student noong siya ay nasa high school. At dahil matalino at likas na mapanuri, siya ay naging tagla pangulo ng League of Filipino Students sa University of the East. At dito, sa piling ng mga kabataang estudyante, hinasa ang kakayanang magorganisa. Hindi lingit sa kaalamahan ng marami na ang isa sa mga di matatawarang kakayahan ng mga aktibista ay ang pag-oorganisa. Bagay na hindi mapag-aralan sa loob ng apat na sulok ng paaralan kundi sa direktang pakikipagugnayan sa mga tao. Sa paaralan, sa pabrika, sa bukireman, o sa mga komunidad sa lungsod. At ito nga ginawang speaker ang ginawa ni Bob sa malaking bahagi ng kanyang buhay. Naging organisador si Bob ng mga kawani ng pamahalaan tulad ng marami sa atin na nasa loob ng buluagang ito. Mga kawani ng pamahalaan sa ilalim ng Confederation for Unity, Recognition, and Advancement of Government Employees or Carriage. Dito ay sinulong niya ang regularisasyon ng mga kawani ng pamahalaan, pagpapataas ng sahod, at sumama sa ibat-ibang pakikibaha ng mga government employees. Kalaunan ay naging leader ng sandigan ng mga manggagawa sa Quezon City si Bob, at inorganisa ang maraming manggagawa upang labanan ang kontraktualisasyon at para sa nakabubuhay na sahod. Ngunit ang dakilang gawain ito ni Bob ay tumigil na ang kinasuhan siya ng panununo raw sa isang lugar sa Agusan del Norte na hindi pa nga niya narating. Sinampahan din si Bob ng illegal possession of firearms at explosives, kahit pa maliit na sling bag lamang ang dalaan ito noong siya ay hinuli. Si Bob ginawang speaker ay katulad ni Maud. Isa siyang bilanggong politikal. Ang aking pangatlong kwento ay kwento namang ni Ginang Virginia Villamor, isang 68 taong gulang na ginang na nakatira sa Nobaliches, Quezon City. Tulad ng mga iba pang kagaya niyang nagkaka edad na ay may arthritis na rin si nanay Virginia. Hirap na siyang makatayo at maglakad. Kaya naman, nang sinabing may natagpuang AK-47 na may bayoneta, M16 assault rifle, kalibre 45 ang pestola, 9 mm, at ilang pirasong loaded na magazine, apat na granada, at umano'y mga subersibong dokumento sa loob ng kanyang bahay noong ito ay nilusob ng populisan ay talagang ikaw ay magtataka. Hindi naman nakatira sa isang arsenal si nanay Virginia at hindi rin siya mayamang drug lord o makapangyarihang politiko. Kasama niya na naarresto ang kanyang asawa na si Alberto Villamor na sisintay 5 ayos na rin. Kasama nilang dinakip ang peace consultant ng National Democratic Front of the Philippines na si Vicente Ladlad na 79 ayos na rin. Sama-sama silang kinasuhan ng illegal possession of firearms and explosives, kahit malayong makakuha at makagamit ng tatlong senior citizens na ito na mga baril at bombang, sinabing nahuli raw sa kanila. Sinanay, sinanay Virginia, tatay Alberto, at si Kavik Ladlad, kagaya ni Maud at ni Bob, ay mga political prisoners. Ginawang speaker, mga kapwa kumambabatas. Si isang lipunang tunay na demokratiko at dapat walang mga bilanggong politikal. Walang ikukulong dahil lamang sa kanilang pampolitikang paninindigan. Si isang lipunang demokratiko, sila ay malanatiling mga organisador, guro, manunulat, makata, development workers, alagad ng sining, aktibista, unyonista, health worker, katutubong nagtatanggol sa lupa o magsasakang lumalaban para sa reformang agrario. Ang mga tulad nila Maud Smaga, Bob Reyes, Virginia, at Albert Villamor, at si Kavik Ladlad, mga taong matatawag nating hindi pangkaraniwan dahil sa buhay, pagod, at pawis na kanilang buong pusong nilaan para sa kapakanan ng ating mga mamamayan ay pinaparangalan at kinikilala at hindi dapat itinuturing ng mga terrorista o mga kriminal. Ginawang speaker, sa kasalukuyan may mahigit na 6 naraan na bilanggong politikal sa kasalukuyan na nakapiit sa ibat-ibang tulungan sa ating bansa. Ang iba sa kanila ay dikada na ang bino oh ikinulong sa mga gawang-gawang kaso. Meron na sa kanilang merong mga malulubhang sakit at ang ilan sa katunayan ay namatay na nga sa ilalim ng hindi makataong kalagayan sa loob ng mga piitan. At isa sa mga namatay na political prisoners na ito ay si Bernaby Okasia o si Kaoka, kung siya ay tawagin. Isa siyang organisador ng mga kapuanyapisante sa Western Samar. Siya po ay partially deaf, partially blind, at merong hypertension, at labing limang taon na siyang ikinulong. Matapos siyang makumatuhos noong ng tatlong araw at matapos tumigil ang kanyang puso ng mga maikatlong ulit, binabuyan siya ng buhay sa isang pampublikong ospital dito sa kamay nila. Ginawang speaker, ang marahas na kalagayan sa bilangguan ang kawalan ng sapat at napapanahong atensyong medikal, at lalo na ang malubhang kawalan ng katarungan ang dahilan ng pagpanaw ni Kaoka at sa labindalawa pang bilanggong politikal, politikal na pumanaw din habang... at sa labindalawa pang bilanggong politikal na pumanaw din habang nakapiit. Ginoong Speaker, masasabi ng kinatawang ito na estado ang pumatay sa kanila. At malubha pa nito ay paparami pa ang bilang na mga detinidong politikal o political prisoner sa kasalukuyan. Ang mga umiiral na batas at patakaran na nagpapasikip sa mga demokratikong espasyo sa ating bansa ay naglulual ng maraming bilanggong politikal. Ang pagsasabatas ng mga panukalang sumasaling sa mga karapatang pantao, gayon din ang paggamit sa mga korte upang palaganapin ang tirania at panunupil, ay magkukulong pa sa mga maraming kagaya nila Kaoka at iba pang katulad niya. Halimbawa, sa ilalim ng Executive Order Number 70, na naglalata raw ng Whole of Nation Approach upang tapusin ang mahigit ka lahating siglung armadong tunggalian sa bagitan ng ating pamahalaan at ng Communist Party of the Philippines, ay nilika ang National Task Force to End the Local Armed Conflict or NTFLCAP. Ang NTFLCAP, Ginoong Speaker, ay umaaktong direktor at tagakumpas ng samotsaring mga pakana laban sa umano sa ensorhensya, ngunit sa katunayan, ang lumalabas ay hindi laban sa mga armadong grupo. Ito ay nakatuon sa harassment o panggigipit sa mga miyembro ng mga progresibong organisasyon at sa mga kritiko ng gobyerno katulad ng aming partidong Bayan Muna at iba pang organisasyon o individual na itinuturing itong kalaban ng pamahalaan. Kaugnayan nito, Ginoong Speaker, na buo rin ang tinatawag na Inter-Agency Committee on Legal Action or IACLA na mistulang pabrika na mga kasong gawa-gawa laban sa mga kritiko ng gobyerno at mga human rights defenders. Isang patunay nito ang nakaraang crackdown sa mga aktibista noong ikatatlongputisa na oktobre sa mga siudad ng Bacolod at Escalante sa Negros Occidental at sa Tondo sa Maynila. Limampot siyam na aktibista ang dinampot sa loob mismo ng mga upisina at kinasuhan ng illegal possession of firearms and explosives. Ang siyam sa kanila ay nananatiling nakakulong dahil sa mga nonavailable offenses na ipinatao sa kanila. At habang patuloy ang legal na atake sa laban sa mga mayang lumalaban, inaasahang sisiki palalo ang mga piitan. Kaya, Ginoong Speaker, sa ating lipunan kung saan ang nakakabalik sa poder ay ang mga mandarambong na nasa matataas na posisyon, ang mga mamamatay tao, at ang mga drug lords na protektado ng mga ninja cops ay nakakalaya. Ang bawat segundo nakapiit ang mga bilanggong politikal ay isang tahasan at malaking inostisya. Bukas, Ginoong Speaker, ikatatlo ng Disyembre ay ang pagalalang muli sa International Day of Solidarity with Political Prisoners and Prisoners of War. Sa ukasyong ito, ay nais nating pagtuunan ng pansin ng kapulungan ito ang kalagayan ng mga detinidong politikal sa ibat-ibang bahagi ng bansa at muling mariing-marihistro ang kanilang mga kahilingan at kahingian. Hinihiling natin ang kagyat na pagpapalaya sa anim naraan at dalampot siyam na bilanggong politikal kung saan siyam naputatlo ay kababaihan, isang daan at labing tatlo ang may karamdaman, at limampu ay nakakatanda na or mga senior citizens. Dapat na rin itigil ang mga pakana, polisiya, patakaran at programa na nililigis ang demokrasya at naglulual na mga bilango dahil sa kanilang paninindigan para sa bayan at sa kalyaan. Bilang panghuli, Ginoong Speaker, makapwa kung mamabatas. Hayaan niyo po akong tapusin ang aking talumpati ngayong hapon sa isang bahagi ng tula na isinulat ni Amado B. Hernandez, National Artist for Literature, isang aktibista at isa rin bilanggong politikal. Ang sabi po niya. At ito ang tanging daigdig ko ngayon. Bilanggo ang manday libingan ng buhay. Sampu, dalampot, at lahat ng taon ng buhay, buong buhay ko ay dito mapipigtal. Ngunit, yaring diway walang takot kurap. Ang batis parin itong aking puso. Piitay bahagi ng pakikilamas, mapiit ay tanda ng di-pagsuko. Ang taut bathala ay di natutulog at di habang araw ang api ay api. Tanang paniniil ay may pagtutuos habang may bastilya may bayang gaganti. At bukas dyan din, aking matatanaw, sa sandipang langit na wala ng luha, sisikat ang gintong araw ng tagumpay. Layang sasalubong ako sa paglaya. Maraming salamat, Ginoong Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Carlos Isagani Zarate to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate actions. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The speech of the distinguished gentleman from Bayan Muna is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, at this juncture, may we recognize the guests of Deputy Minority Leader Honorable Carlos Isagani Zarate. They are the family and relatives of political prisoners, Fides Lim, Jigs Clemore, Calaya Anrosales, Clarice Vergara, Bona Lositania, Abigail Roa, April Atedero, Violeta Morilio, and Maria Cristina Guevara.
The guest of Representative Carlos Isagani Zarate is requested to please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Vincent Franco Di Frasco of the Fifth District of Cebu. They are the barangay captains of the municipality of Liloan, Cebu, headed by the ABC President Gloria Sanchez, barangay Captain Lorena Yunco, barangay Captain Fe Pepito, barangay Captain Maria Rosanisa Tilau, barangay Captain Miguel Malabon, barangay Captain Isidro Cabahog, barangay Captain Andres Lutao Jr., barangay Captain Pablo Angtud, barangay Captain Richard Pendo and wife, barangay Captain Miguel Malabon, barangay Captain Luther Lauron, and barangay Captain Rosalia Naval.
To the barangay captains from Cebu, welcome to the House of Representatives. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Arnofo Tevez Jr. of the Third District of Negros Oriental. We recognize for his privileged speech.
The distinguished gentleman from Negros Oriental is hereby recognized. Proceed, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. Again, I stand here today to talk about our national ID. I helped defend this bill. I was one of the authors of this bill. And yet, last week in our pilot registration, nakita ko doon, pagdating ko palang pinasulat ako sa papel. Sabi ko, bakit bumabalik tayo sa stone age? Kaya nga natin ito ginawa dahil meron na tayong data from other agencies. Sabi ko, kung meron ng datos 'yung tao, huwag na natin pasulatin. Kunin na lang natin 'yung dato sa iba-iba ang ahensya, 'yun na 'yung gamitin. 'Yan naman 'yung original concept ng bill na ito. Why? Unang-una, if we start from scratch, magkakaroon na naman ng mga mali. 'Yung existing data, malamang kung nagkamaliman 'yung dati, corrected na. Next, it is very costly to start from scratch. Imagine 100 million na papel para sa 100 million na tao. Next is the time. Kung magsisimula ulit tayo from scratch, it will be very time-consuming. Kanina lang nag-meeting kami, andyan 'yung SSS. Sabi nila meron silang data for 20 million at kaya nilang ishare. So, kung ishare na lang 'yung data, madali na, mas mabilis tayo magkaroon ng national ID. Ang isa ng problema dito is the privacy. So, ang request ko, kung 'yung isang tao, wala naman siyang tinatago at sabihin niya, "Okay na ako na kunin 'yung datos ko," dapat payaga na 'yun. Hindi na pwedeng umangal 'yung privacy commission dito dahil 'yung tao mismo ang nagsabi na pwede na kunin 'yung data niya. I just hope magawaan to ng paraan dahil masasayang 'yung napakagandang batas na ginawa natin kung babalik tayo sa lumang paraan na manual na pagsusulat, kung hindi naman kailangan. If the data is already there, gamitin na lang 'yun. And I know that we have data in so many agencies. We have data in SSS, we have data in NBI, COMELEC, GSIS, and DFA, and all other agencies. Even our thumbprints are already there. I further requested na kunan lang nila ng datos 'yung wala talagang datos. 'Yung kulang na lang na, and 'yung may data na, kung kulang ng iris scan at fingerprint, 'yun na lang ang kunin. Huwag na pasulatin 'yung tao. By doing this, we will have a national ID in a very, very short period of time. Sana lang marinig dun ang lahat ng concern at magawa ng paraan. Pagtulungan natin ito, we really need this national ID soon as possible. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I mean, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you, distinguished gentleman from Negros Oriental. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
The gentleman.
Majority floor leader.
The gentleman from Iloilo, Representative Lawrence Defensor wishes to interpolate Representative Tevez. I move that he be recognized.
The distinguished gentleman from Iloilo is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker. I could not agree more with the gentleman from Negros Oriental with regard to the collection of data as well as our personal compliance with respect to the Felci's ID system. May I know from the body, Mr. Speaker, if the representatives of the House on Congress can be informed who is the data privacy officer of the House of Representatives? Does the gentleman know right now?
I do not know, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I request the Honorable House Secretariat if the gentleman from Negros Oriental can be furnished with the officer submitted to the Data Privacy Commission, who are the data privacy officers as well as the deputy data privacy officers of the House of Representatives? I also noticed that during the collection of our personal data, some of which are classified as sensitive personal information under Republic Act 10173 or the Data Privacy Act of 2012. It is not clear that there is a waiver of rights under the Data Privacy Act of 2012. I also request that the Honorable Gentleman from Negros Oriental be briefed by the members of the House Secretariat so far as data collection is concerned. Right now, the Data Privacy Act of 2012 is being implemented nationwide. Private companies, most especially hospitals, telecommunications companies, airlines, malls, those heavily involved in the collection of sensitive personal information. We still do not practice the parameters required.
What I shouldn't be writing anymore because you already have my data. 'Yun lang naman 'yung request ko eh. Na 'yung mga taong hindi na kailangan sumulat at okay kunin 'yung datos nila, sumulat lang siya ng waiver, okay na 'yun.
Mr. Speaker, may I request the Honorable Gentleman to request the Secretariat to provide us with an update as to the status of our submission with the National Privacy Commission insofar as our collection of data here in Congress is concerned?
That would be great, Mr. Speaker.
Yes. Before I end, Mr. Speaker, may I just reiterate, together with the Honorable Gentleman Representative Tevez, if we can inform who is the data privacy officer of the House of Representatives? Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you to the gentleman from Negros.
Thank you, distinguished gentleman from Iloilo. The Secretary General is hereby directed to address the concern of the distinguished gentleman from Iloilo. Mr. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of Representative Tevez as well as the interpolations thereon be referred to the Committee on Rules.
There being no objection, the speech of the distinguished gentleman from Negros Oriental is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority floor leader. Session suspended. Session resume. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the gentleman from the Buay Partilis, the Honorable Jose L. Atienzo Jr., be recognized to avail of the privilege hour. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished gentleman from the Buay Partilis is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Majority Floor Leader. At maraming salamat sa ating mga kasamahan dahil 'yung pagkakataong ibinigay sa amin, makapagsalita sa hapong ito. Dalamarahil ng ating pagkaabala sa maraming bagay, ating mga kaba- mga kaba- bayan, sa paghahanap buhay, at sa ating pananaw sa nangyayari ngayong paligsahan, the Southeast Asian Games. Dalawang araw ang naraan, at parang hindi natin masyado nabigyan ang halaga. So I'm here, I'd like to be able to go back a few days ago on what transpired in our history, which we may have failed to give the necessary importance and relevance today. Una, 'yung Nobyembre 30, kaarawan ang ating bayaning Gatanres Bonifacio. Sang Pilipino mapagmahal sa bayan at kapwa at may respeto sa tao. Noong Nobyembre 27, ay kaarawan naman ng bayani natin si Nino Yakinu. No matter how you may want to look at history, on which side political fence you are in now, you must not forget that we had a hero in Benigno Nino Yakinu. 'Yung taong 'yun ay nabuhay ng punum-puno ng kagalingan at ipinakita ang kanyang pagiging tunay na bayani sa pagmamahal sa bayan. He holds many, many accomplishments in life, and he could have lived a comfortable one if he desired to do just that and forget about his basic principles and philosophy in life, and that is a real democracy to reign in the land. Ungugunita in atin, Nino was one of the youngest, if not the youngest correspondent that covered the Korean War. At age 17, he was given the Philippine Medal of Honor. He was the youngest mayor of his time when he became mayor of Concepcion, Talat. He became the youngest vice-governor at the age of 27. And after two years, he became the youngest governor as governor of Talat. And after that, we know very well, he became an outstanding senator, topping the elections, barely making the limit of the minimum age for a senator of the land. So you can see that this So, you can see that this man tried his very best to excel. And as such, a graduate of LaSalle College, a graduate of Ateneo de Manila, a graduate of the University of the Philippines, eloquent as he was, articulate on the matters that he discusses. Yun po 'yung mga daan sa isang matagumpay na negosyante. Pero hindi po yun ang landas sa kanyang pinaha. Apagat nasabay siya sa takbu ng ating panahon, at ang mga paghamon sa kanya, ay kanyang hinarap at tinanggap. We all know the history and the story of this man. He was inspirational, as he was also convincing. He was a born leader and a developed, effective leader of his time. Mga panahong nagdaan, hindi po lahat ng Pilipinong politiko ay handang magsakripisyo. No'ng ibinabaan bakas militar, lahat po nawalan ng dila. Hindi si Nino Yacino. The tougher, the darker, the time was, the more articulate that man became. And he continued to inspire young men and women of his time. Sana po ang iyong linkod, tinasabi kong tahasan, hindi dahil kani Nino Yacino, marahil, hindi kami sumama sa pagalsarambayan upang mapalaya tayo sa panigala ng diktaduria. He was never cold as he stood pat, facing the dictator, challenging him in every way that he can. No'ng 1980, 1978, tumawag ng eleksyon, ang diktador, marami sa mga politiko nagsabi, huwag tayong lumahok dyan kapag tayo'y matatalo. Tayo'y dadayain. But not Nino. He gathered the handful of Filipinos willing to fight, and he formed a ticket. And he dared contest the elections of the KBL, led by no less than President Ferdinand Marcos and Emelda Marcos. There is history because of a Commission on Elections which played the killer of democracy then, the 21 men and women who faced up to the powerful KBL or lost. That was not a believable election. Can you imagine Nino Yacino getting beaten? The record holder of Philippine politics getting beaten by unknown men and women of the KBL. He landed 22 in a field of 21 winners. Bakit? Dahil siya pa, kapag dinaya. Tama po 'yung sinabi ng mga politiko noon, huwag kayong lalaho kapag dadayain lang kayo. But he didn't mind to be cheated. Sabi nga niya, dayain ako, lalo magagalitan tao, which is exactly what happened. To my colleagues now, enjoying the mantle of the PDP Laban, I'd like to remind you, you may not realize that Laban was organized by this man, Nino Yacino. Laban, lakas ng bayan, was a symbol of resistance. And for whatever you are in now as a political party, without Nino Yacino, you would not have been able to reach these present positions you're in. Ang akin po lang naman, itwid natin ang kaalaman ng ating mga kaibigan, ng ating mga kasamahan. They were too young to take note of Nino Yacino then. They were too young to even be inspired into action. So, when they killed Nino Yacino on August 21, 1983, people woke up to reality. Tama lahat ang pangaral itong taong ito, pag hindi tayo lumaban, pag habang panahon tayong nasa kadiliman. And that was the Day of Reckoning. August 21, 1983, was the day that the Filipinos decided, sobra na, tama na, palitan na ang diktaduria. Doon nag-alsa ang masang Pilipino. Doon, maraming tumayo at nagsasabing kasama ko dito sa Laban ito. Doon, nagwagay huwain ng bandila ang partidong lakas ng bayan, na ginamit naman ng lahat upang mapagtagumpayan ang ating ipinaglalaba. Kaya ngayon, tayong lahat ay bunga ng isang malayang sistema. Tayo ngayon ay nagtatamasan ang demokrasya. We will not be able to reach our goals unless we give meaning and substance and relevance to the sacrifices of past Filipinos. Andres Bonifacio, panahon ng Castilla. Nino Yacino, panahon ng martial law, kadiliman. Thousands upon thousands of young Filipinos disappeared during martial law. Megatwiran matakot ang marami. Magkakabataang, merong taglay, sapagnanais sa isang malayang pamumuhay, na ang galing ng Pilipino ay matamasan natin ngayon kapag tayo nilikha na meron tayong lahat ng kagalingan. Nakikita natin ngayon sa C-Games ang marami sa kanila. Nakita na natin sa mga nakaraang panahon, ano ang galing ng Pilipino? Yan ang palaging sinasabi ni Nino. "The Filipino is worth dying for." 'Yung mga katagang yon, "The Filipino is worth dying for." Dahil maraming nagsasabi sa kanya, "Itigil mo na ang Laban mo kay Marcos, napipiko na." No'ng siya na sa Amerika, ang sinabi sa kanya, "Huwag ka nang bumalik do'n, tiyak, papatayin ka." Anong sagot ni Nino? "Bibali ng patayin ako na lumalaban, at hindi 'yung patayin ako ng nakaluhan, pag habang buhay." Let those words ring in our ears and our hearts today, that no matter what, we must fight for what is correct and what is right and what is good for the Filipino. Binigyan tayo ng Panginoon, ng lahat, ng yaman ng kaligasan, hindi natin ginagamit ng tama. Binigyan tayo ng mayamang dagat, mayamang lupa, mayamang bundok. Hindi natin ginagamit ng tama. Binigyan tayo ng lahat ng mineral, ginto, pilak, copper. Sabihin po ninyo kung anong mineral ang inyong tingin ninyo magpapayaman sa tao, meron ang Pilipinas. So, may masasay question. Then why do we remain poor? Bakit naghihirap ang tao? Dahil hindi natin ginagamit ng tama. Marami tayong takot. Marami tayong pagdadalawang isip. Marami tayong patumpik-sa ating ginagawa. Talagay ko eh, kung hindi natin malilimutan ang mga katagah salita, pag-iisip, biwa nitong taong ito. Nino Yacino, Andres Bonifacio, dalawang taong pinaslang na kapwa Pilipino. Ano kaya ang mangyayari? Kung tayo'y magmumuni-muni na unti. Sa bansa natin, kung ang mga namuno sa atin ay katulad ni Andres Bonifacio, kung ang namuno sa atin ay katulad ni Nino Yacino, na meron talagang tunay na tapang sa kanyang katauhan, sa kanilang katauhan. Talagay ko eh, malayo na ang narating ng Pilipino. Walang mangyayari sa mga leader ng Singapore, leader ng Hapon, leader ng China, kung ang namumuno ay mga taong katulad nila. Walang takot na panserili. Hinahrap ang lahat ng panib. Hinarap ni Nino ang tiyak na bala pagtuntung niya sa lupa sa Pilipinas. Sinabi sa kanya, "You will not be able to land on Philippine soil. You will be killed." Natakot po ba si Nino? Wala pong epekto 'yung ganung klasing pananakot sa taong ganoon. Yun ang kailangan nating mga leader ngayon, 'yung may tapang, may talino, may galing, at merong karanasan pa paggubiyerno, na huwag nating sayangin, gamitin sa kapakanan ng tao at paunlarin ang ating kalagayan. Mararating natin ang ating panaginip. Wala tayong gigising sa katotohanan. Tama na ang paglalaro. Tama na ang panilin lang. Tama na ang mga kalokoan. Seriosin natin ang ating trabaho, pagtatagumpay tayo. And we must not forget, people like Nino Yacino, forever and ever, as he inspired millions of Filipinos to the point of giving up their lives. You know many of them. I knew many of them. Our friends disappeared, never to reappear again. Los disparitos ang tawag natin, nangawala ng walang bakas, lumaban, nanindigan. Eh, wag ko kung nagugunita paninyo, ang mga taong ito, subalit, huwag nating kalilimutan, umaari po. Habang ginagampanan natin ang ating trabaho, ang ating tungkulin, mga mababatas tayo, we are all members of Congress. We must therefore perform to the best of our abilities how our past heroes did and contribute themselves. Kailangan kong isa puso natin. Kailangan natin gunitain. Huwag nating kalilimutan. Kung ano man ang nangyayari, nangyari na sa mga nakaraang panahon, sa mga nagdaang pinuno. Subalit, ang mga pinunong nagbuwis ng buhay ay hindi natin dapat kalimutan. So today, I shout to the highest level of my voice what Nino said, "The Filipino is worth dying for." It will not end ang Laban. Dito, Congreso. Marami salamat po.
The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Jose L. Atienza Jr. of Buay Partelis to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate actions. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The speech of the distinguished gentleman from Buay Partelis is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Madam Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Second District of Zambales, the Honorable Cheryl P. De Losa Montalia, to be recognized to avail of the privilege hour. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished lady from the Second District of Zambales is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, good afternoon. I stand before you today on a matter closest to my heart as a duly-elected government official, a public servant, a native of the municipality of Botolan, and a proud Zambalenyo. But before I go to the meat of my speech, may I invite you to see this short audio presentation of DPWH Region 3.
The acceleration of infrastructure development is among the top priorities of the current administration, with public spending on infrastructure projects targeted to reach 8 to 9 trillion pesos until 2022 to usher in what is touted as the golden age of infrastructure. Dubbed as Duterteomics, the master plan is anchored on the concept of build, build, and build from revenues gathered using the tax reform measure. In Region 3, numerous infrastructure projects are still needed to push through with its vision of being one of the Philippines' prime investment destinations. Known as a W-growth corridor, it defines Central Luzon's key growth areas. It comprises of Central Luzon's key investment area for tourism, industry, and agriculture. These areas represent the growth municipalities of the region, which, when plotted on a map, form the shape of a W. Central Luzon lies between Manila and North Luzon and is composed of seven provinces: Aurora, Bataan, Bulacan, Nueva Ecija, Pampanga, Tarlac, and Zambales. Only 66 kilometers away from Metro Manila, Central Luzon is the gateway to the northern Luzon regions, having the largest plains in the country. It has 14 cities, 116 municipalities, 3,102 barangays, and 20 congressional districts. Central Luzon has a population of 11.22 million, or 11% of the country's total population. The Department of Public Works and Highways, being at the forefront of infrastructure development, has one of the vital roles in the much-needed infrastructure projects for the region to reach its full investment potential. In Region 3, four high-impact and crucial infrastructure projects have been substantially completed and are presently under construction: the Capas-Botolan Road in Zambales, the Pulilan Baliwag Divergent Road in Bulacan, the Bagap-Mariveles Road in Bataan, and the Villia-Aurora Bridge in Aurora. Tarlac is known as the melting pot of Central Luzon, a mixture of the best of the provinces of its distinct groups in the region. It has the most divergent cultures to the most exquisite cuisines. Tarlac shares a common link with the province of Zambales with its celebrated Mount Pinatubo track. Zambales is a coastal province also famous for the sweetest mangoes and its tourist destinations of untouched beaches and resorts. Until recently, there is no direct road network between Tarlac and Zambales. Before the implementation of the project, motorists have to either pass by the usual route in Pangasinan, Bataan, and Pampanga, since rough and mountainous terrains separate the two provinces. The Capas-Botolan Road is a road-upgrading project to construct missing gaps connecting national roads. The project is intended to connect the existing Capas-Botolan Road. There is still a non-existing section mostly located in Botolan. The completion of the road will effectively reduce travel time between provinces from 3 hours to about 1 hour and 20 minutes. This will in turn have a tremendous impact on trade and tourism across Tarlac and Zambales. The road-upgrading project mainly includes the normal-width paved carriageway with widened width on super-elevated sections on every curve on both sides. The construction also includes a stone masonry wall lining the canal of the mountainside. This will serve as the road's drainage and slope protection. A metal-beam guardrail will also be installed on the cliffside in keeping with road safety.
Mr. Speaker, the matter of my speech, obviously, is the Botolan-Capas Road project. This project started as a concept more than 30 years ago and prior to the eruption of Mount Pinatubo, originally proposed by then Central Luzon Regional Development Council Chairperson, at that time, Zambales Governor Amor di De Losa. This project was a product of a pre-feasibility study which was commissioned by the Department of Public Works and Highways in 2010. Shelled for more than a decade, the 8.33 billion pesos Capas-Botolan Road project finally became a reality in 2016 after numerous letters from the undersigned pushing for the realization of this noble undertaking. Under the concept of a multi-year funding, an initial budget of 200 million was allocated in the 2016 General Appropriations Act for the said project. We are blessed that this noteworthy endeavor is among the priorities of President Rodrigo Rova Duterte in his "Build, Build, Build" program and under the able leadership of DPWH Secretary Mark A. Villar. Res ipsa lukitor, the thing speaks for itself. Armed with the idea that the Capas-Butolan Road project is one of the pet projects of the administration, I went to an IEP community in the hinterlands of Butolan on October 26, 2019, upon their invitation. En route, we passed by the said road project and before my very eyes, I saw what most of us did not see in the spectacle that is Butolan-Capas Road. Mr. Speaker, I am no civil engineer and neither am I an expert in civil engineering works. But absent any force majeure prior to this travesty, the damaged portion of the Capas-Butolan Road speaks a lot about its quality of work. Res ipsa lukitor. Based on the documents that I gathered, the following facts are notable: The original cost of the project was 200 million, as appearing in the 2016 GAA. The approved budget cost was reduced to 171,954,689 pesos and 84 centavos. The winning bidder had a bid price of 138,413,298 pesos and 40 centavos. But a variation order was made which revised the contract amount to 152,25,964 pesos and 14 centavos. And there you go, my dear colleagues and Mr. Speaker. Our taxes went down the drain. Teeming with floss from cracks, shoulder slips, narrow and shallow drainage, substandard embankments, and poor workmanship over a span of at least 5 kilometers, the implementing agency, which is the DPWH Region 3, is now pushing for the enrollment of the Capas-Butolan Road project in the NEDA approved for Official Development Assistance, or ODA. Admitting that they started on the wrong foot in this piece of infrastructure venture, DPWH Region 3 hurriedly went to the damaged section of the road, conducted visual inspection, and we are until now awaiting for official report. Mr. Speaker, res ipsa lukitor is a doctrine that infers negligence from a very nature of an accident or injury in the absence of direct evidence on how any defendant behaved. The duty of care, breach, and causation inferred from an injury that does not ordinarily occur without negligence are the elements of this legal doctrine. My dear colleagues, in the case at bar, a lot of questions regarding the implementation of this project vacillate upon my head, more than you do. How will we be able to complete the project in 2022 if we have this kind of project implementation? I was informed that this is not the first time that a severe damage to the project happened. In fact, this is the third time in a span of 2 years. According to the DPWH Region 3, this is a design flaw that must be corrected, otherwise similar damage may occur in the future. Whether the flaw is in the design or its actual implementation, one thing is certain: Something definitely wrong was done which resulted in the wastage of taxpayers' money. Mr. Speaker, the DPWH is the expert when it comes to infrastructure projects: design, implementation, and all. If they say that what happened to the Capas-Butolan Road was a design flaw, then why did they allow it to push through knowing fully well that doing it would be disadvantageous to the government and to the damage and prejudice of the taxpayers? It would have been prudent for them, upon actual site inspection, to go back to the drawing board and craft the appropriate design for this specific section of the Capas-Butolan Road project. Be that dismayed, I thank ARD Denise Agai for personally conducting the ocular inspection in order to have a person information about the real situation on the ground as instructed by Regional Director Rosellier Tolentino. I also thank DPWH Region 3 through Director Tolentino for candidly owning up to the mistake which he "just inherited." I was informed as of late that after the inspection of ARD Agai, the contractor hurriedly instituted measures, though palliative, to make the road project seemingly appealing in the photos. But you know, Mr. Speaker, as they say, "It ain't over until the fat lady sings." And as the DPWH Region 3 has said, we must exact culpability and demand that the damaged portion of the road be removed and replaced at no expense to the government. Mr. Speaker, I ask the National Economic and Development Authority to forewith commence the process of putting this project under ODA, to ensure that we limit to a minimum, if not totally avoid, corruption in the implementation of the Butolan-Capas Road project, and ensure that this piece of infrastructure will speak for us in the generations to come. Res ipsa lukitor. I also call on the appropriate committee of this house to conduct a full-blown inquiry into this tragedy called the Capas-Butolan Road, with the envy of ensuring that this project would truly redound to the utmost benefit of the Filipino people, particularly to the residents of the province of Zambales. Finally, Mr. Speaker, in order not to preempt the result of the fair and impartial investigation which we will conduct in the matter, I would like to enjoin my colleagues to reserve their questions on the matter of my speech for the said inquiry. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good afternoon.
Thank you, the distinguished lady from Zambales, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of the Honorable Deloso Montalia be referred to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action. So move.
Is there any objection? The speech of the distinguished lady from Zambales is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, we'd like to greet the guests of the Honorable Majority Leader Martin Romualdes and Tingog Party List Representative Yeda Marie Romualdes. These are the Dep Ed City Division of Tagom City officials, Schools Division Superintendent Nelson Lopez, Josefina Palaca, Anwar Maadell, Judith Magzipok, Roger Martinez, Honorable Henelo Orsenio, Roger Dompol, and Kenneth Dlingensya.
Will the guests of the Majority Floor Leader and Representative Yeda Romualdes please rise? Where are they? Are they in the gallery? Welcome, the guests of the Majority Floor Leader. Yes, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, move to suspend.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Before the Majority Floor Leader proceeds, I'd like to take this opportunity to greet the distinguished representative from Davao Occidental a happy 25th birthday. Yes, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, allow us to greet some guests in the gallery. These are the guests of the Honorable Christian Unabia from the First District of Mesames Oriental, Municipal Mayor of Magsaysay Rey Buhissan, and First Lady Shali Buhissan, Barangay Captain of Abunda Reagan Clement, Barangay Captain of Artadi Ernesto Balyard, Barangay Captain of Bonifacio Aquino Hemelo Cortez, Barangay Captain of Kabubuhan Romeo Gonzalez, Barangay Captain of Cabantian Ruchel Alasan, Barangay Captain of Consuelo Mario Militares, Barangay Captain of Cabalawan Alvaro Oyog, Barangay Captain of Damayuan Charlito Labiano, Barangay Captain of Gumabon Danielson Derecho, Barangay Captain of Candis Venerando Cabresos, Barangay Captain of Catipunan Nelson Lubrigas, Barangay Captain of Kauswagan Jonathan Bongado, Barangay Captain of Kibung sod Hermohenes Cardenio, Barangay Captain of Mindulaw Camilo Ratilia, Barangay Captain of Pagasa Manuel Garciano, Barangay Captain of Poblacion Dennis Desoy, Barangay Captain of San Isidro Rey Meniosa, Barangay Captain of San Vicente Eliotario Gula Junior, Barangay Captain of Santa Cruz Lu Ratilia, Barangay Captain of Tibon Tibon Rico Salvo, Barangay Captain of Tinaan Juanito Duran, Barangay Captain of Tulang Marciano Barbón, Barangay Captain of Villa Felipe Raymond Gaviola, L&amp;B Secretariat Maria Adeline Salon, Mayor's Office Staff Christopher Ratilia, and Marcos Babaylan Junior, Chief of Staff and Tourism Officer Philip Neri Caseres, and finally, wife of Captain Cardeno Maribel C. Cardenio.
To the visitors, the guests of the Honorable Representative Unabia, welcome to the House of the People, the House of Representatives, the distinguished municipal and barangay officials and other officials from the district of Congressman Unabia. Welcome to the House of Representatives. The Majority Floor Leader?
Mr. Speaker, also, we would like to move to recognize the guests of our minority leader from the Sixth District of Manila, Honorable Benvenido Benny Abante from the Sixth District Senior Citizen Officers, President Merisha Bareto, Vice President Cassano Carganilia, Secretary Ismael Gozum, Treasurer Josefina Monet, Auditor Heniroso Givara, Former Chairman Hermi Eronga, Chairman Evelyn Chavez, Chairman Evelyn Malliari, Kagawa Droena Cruz, Kagawa Jessica Pada, and Barangay Secretary Evelyn Tan.
To the respected and energetic officers of the senior citizen from the district of Minority Floor Leader Benny Abante, welcome to the House of the People, the House of Representatives. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I also move that we recognize the guest of Congressman Cuia Jonathan C. Alvarado from the First District of Bulacan. His guest comes from the Pads Adaptive Dragon Boat Racing Team, composing of... representing the athletes and the admin support crew. We have with us today Founder/Team Manager Elite Team John Paul E. Karma Maunes.
The House of Representatives, welcome the athletes, guests of Honorable Cuia Jose Antonio Alvarado. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Oh, there you are.
Mr. Speaker, just to mention their names, the admin support crew, Head Coach Maria Eileen Padrones, Team Sport Physician Dr. Lohindren Adorable, Catherine Rose Ariola, Anna Rae Besario, Lorraine J. Queroll, Arnold Balais, their team captain, Mariel Marie Maunes, and the athletes, Janice Apari, Anthony Bagyo, Rocky Burdin, Jeffrey Dal, Jonathan de la Penya, Verniel Faustria, Jonard Paul Gallo, Bonjovi Guimayen, Gabriel Anthony Labra, Owen Luceno, Stephen Maglasang, Wilson Lumong sod, Romancito Nogera, Eva Marinoya, Emma Concepcion Redita, Marvin Renasha, Michael Sabehon, Jose Revell Sotes, James Chu, Kent Tumangan, Marvin Joseph Ubay, Ray Mart Valiser, Denver Verano, Danilo Villardo, Daxin Abala, Pemar Ansok, Ezra James Montalban, Rachel Kangke, Princess Dagum, Karen Dianon, Obri Harrell, Myra May Puso and Nestor Bulan.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Does the Majority Floor Leader have any knowledge if the athletes are also competing in the ongoing Sea Games?
I believe they are not participating in said Sea Games, Mr. Speaker.
The House of Representatives would like to wish you the best of luck, bring home the gold medal, win the gold medal. Thank you very much. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to avail of the privilege hour, I move that we terminate privilege hour.
Privilege hour is hereby terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, this being the second day of December, the month in which our dear Lord Jesus Christ is born, we invite the members of the house to join us for a tree-lighting ceremony by the entrance, by the main entrance, near the flagpole at 5:30 PM today.
Today?
Yes.
Yes, the members of the House of Representatives, together with their guests and their staff, please, you are invited and please attend the lighting of the Christmas tree in front of the building, the Batasang Pabansha Building.
Yes.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader.
And, Mr. Speaker, there being no other business to transact on the floor, this afternoon, I move that we suspend session until Tuesday, December 3 at 3 PM. So move.
Yes. Is there any objection to the favorite motion? There being none, session is hereby suspended until 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.